It's 10 o'clock, so we'll go ahead and get started with the work session for April 1st. And I wanted to have a good joke for April Fools, but I figured the fact that we're all having to work on April Fool's days enough, so. Want to welcome everybody, thank everybody for being here. We've got the agenda for the work session, and then we're immediately after going to have a call where we have two different resolutions we've got to go through. And kicking off with department updates, Sheriff Craig, would you mind going first?
Sure. Don't really have a whole lot to report this morning, other from what we had last year, or the last meeting, but we're doing very well on some recruiting and hiring moving forward. Got some good folks coming to work for us over the next month or so, so that's working out well. A lot of training going on, working with your fire department. We want to thank them for their cooperation with some of the active shooter training that we're doing. Actually trained the trainers that now the fire department and sheriff's office can work together to train our staff without having to bring folks into my side of the state to do the training. We're excited about that. Was able to make a donation to Pickens Fire and Jasper Fire with the bulletproof vest, the tactical vest, so in the event that they have to go into an active shooter situation, they are a little more prepared. And that was able to be done with the partnership that we have with Cobb County, made the donation to us with those vests. Were able to repurpose those and get those out to the fire departments. So, again, things actually going pretty well there. This morning, we have got a couple of presentations, if this will be the appropriate time. We didn't all just show up to be here for all the other stuff, but we did appreciate-
Right before you do that, though, based on what you were talking about with your training, and I know that you and I both got copied on an email from Sloan from this morning, but there was a bad car accident, head-on collision car accident this morning, and one of the deputies was the first on the scene, and using that same training, applied a tourniquet to someone who potentially had a severed artery in his leg, then according to the initial fire response said that had he not, that that guy would have most likely bled out. So I think that that's just incredible to see already playing out. And I didn't mean to cut you off before you went into the other.
Yeah, that's the same training that we're doing. Sloan has taught us for several years now with the tourniquets and how to apply them properly, and then working closely with us with active shooter, and the tourniquet is part of that. So I'd say this morning was a prime example of where that training has come in handy. And luckily not involved with an active shooter, but you know, it was something as such as an accident.
Yeah.
But this morning, we've got, our office does employ the month, each month, and we sent out our notice to the staff. The staff makes recommendations back to us before we choose that employee. So this morning, we appreciate the opportunity to be able to present our Employee of the Month in front of this board. And so I asked Captain Cagle if he would come up, and then also Charlie. Charlie Vickers is our auxiliary president, and we're able to provide the Employee of the Month program with the sheriff's office, if any of you come up. So January's Employee of the Month this year is Andrea Plaid. Andrea came to us from Bartow County Sheriff's Office. She has, I'm not going to tell you how many years of experience, but I don't want to tell her age here, but she's got a lot of experience in law enforcement and working with investigations. And we met her through our relationship and just doing other investigations and working with Bartow County, was able to talk her into coming to work for us. And I tell you, Andrea, one thing that sticks out in my mind with Andrea is she is, she's a great lady. She worked really well with the public. She's, you know, she really come over and fit in with us and hit the ground running. She's all been with us for four months, but very proud to have Andrea and her team being a part of our office. And actually Captain Cagle, who actually gets to supervise her and work with her, I think she required a little more supervision, but she does.
She joined the sheriff's office not long after I did in the fall. And part of my job is to review all the reports that patrol does each day, assign what needs to be assigned to detectives with some follow-up. And so I assigned a case to Andrea, which literally had no chance of being solved. But she worked hard with it. The victim is a disabled Vietnam Air Vet, so it's important to try to do the best we could with that. And she literally turned, I'll clean this up, she literally turned chicken manure into chicken salad. She did a really good job. She sawed it, and while she was sawing that one, literally uncovered more crimes and solved those too. So she's very good with the public. She specializes in crimes against children and sex crimes, and she does a wonderful job. She really does.
Come on, man.
Andrea, congratulations. And on behalf of the sheriff's auxiliary, I'd like to present you this certificate on the honor you've been given today, and we just appreciate your work, and we're just proud to work with you.
So we'd like to also present our February Employee of the Month. That's from a young guy that's been working with us for about three years, roughly, give or take a few months, and Mr. Dalton Gasaway. So Dalton, he came to work for us, worked at the jail for about a year before we were able to get him into mandate. Shortly after that, we got him out of uniform patrol. And I'm not really going to go into a whole lot, other than, again, just like Andrea, Dalton is a super guy, does an excellent job dealing with the public, talking to folks. He's here because he wants to be here, not because he can't go somewhere else. And as y'all know, how important it is to help building buildings, and this is just, you know, one of the standards that we have, and you really set the bar high for these younger guys coming in, following in their footsteps. Last Sergeant Judy Weaver, come up, say a few words.
I wrote down a few things I wanted to say about Deputy Gasaway. He was one of the youngest applicants that I ever processed when I was over at the Office of Professional Standards, and it was evident how much time and effort that he invested in earning his position with the agency. And he's always had a mindset of earning everything that he's had. During his time as a detention officer, he worked extremely hard, he took his position and duties extremely seriously. At an age where a lot of his peers were focused on less mature things, Gasaway, through his own actions, made it very clear that a rewarding career in law enforcement was at the very top of his life goals. During pre-mandate, he was always punctual, always eager to learn, always showed up with positive attitude, and he was the only cadet that could outrun me. As a cadet, when he went into Law Enforcement Academy, he earned the coveted Top Gun Award for his proficiency in firearms. He really made our agency proud every step of the way through the academy. While having the privilege to work alongside him in Uniform Patrol, he's demonstrated very admirable skills such as officer safety, time management, drive, self-motivation, work ethic, punctuality, and dependability, and his demeanor and professionalism and tact when serving the public is second to none. Recently, when the opposite day shift was short-staffed, Gasaway was the first deputy to volunteer to temporarily change shifts to ensure coverage. His explanation for doing this was, "I'm young and don't have kids, so it only makes sense." He feels that it's natural to make sacrifices for others, and it's evidence of his servant's heart, and it is what makes him one of the best law enforcement officers that this agency will ever have the privilege to employ. So I'm proud of you, your dedication, and I love working with you.
One of the deficits that was out on that accident at this point, to help with that situation, as you can say, he's dressed for the occasion. You know, they say you're always good as those that you surround yourself with. I look back over the last 12 years, my success has come from folks like Dalton and Andrea and the staff that we have, and I'm very proud of that. So, thank you. You guys make my job easier.
And Dalton, I'd also like to congratulate you on behalf of the sheriff's auxiliary, and never heard anything but good stuff about you, and it's just a pleasure to work with you. Congratulations.
Thank you. So we'll go on through as far as getting more updates, and we'll just kind of work our way down, roll over to the assessment.
Today's April 1st, the last day of the return periods for all property owners, personal property accounts, home deed exemptions, things of that nature. Want to thank my staff and the public. The public's had a good response in giving us updates on their properties and their accounts this year. Still looking forward to getting our new aerial photography online for everybody to view to see the changes that Pickens County has had in the last three years. As everybody can tell, as everybody can tell, things are really changing in Pickens County. My wife and I wanted to go to Canton to the doctor's office yesterday. It only took us 10 minutes to go from sitting at McDonald's to getting on the interstate to go south, because there's so much traffic, there's so much growth in this area. So I want to thank all the departments for working with all the new customers, landowners, people are coming here just as fast as they can come. We're getting a lot of compliments about everybody that they deal with in Pickens County. They can actually ask people questions and get answers, and people are loving coming to Pickens County. So that's what we're seeing from our end, and I want to thank my staff that I'm working like a government mule on weekends and everything to try to keep up with the changes that we're seeing. So thank the staff, all the staff for all their hard work.
Since you're saying it that way, every time I come here on the weekend to work in my office, the only vehicle that's here is Stephanie that's in here working, so I would say the staff should specifically include her by name at this point, so you'd definitely be there.
And I'm not wearing my shoes on those ladies.
Thank you, thank you. Daniel, over at the Tax Commissioner's side?
Yes, sir.
Last.
Things are going well. Our team has done a phenomenal job in there, got a good group of ladies working in there that do a great job for me every day. Today actually is the deadline for mobile home taxes, and we've got through that season, so today's the deadline on that, getting that behind us. You know, we're in the process of recruitment and taking a lot of applications, hiring one more person in there, and so, you know, that's going well. We had a lot of those to go through, a lot of folks applied for that job, so we've been very thankful for that. We've had a good group of people to choose from. And as, you know, as far as down the pipe, I'd say that, you know, space is probably a little bit of an issue maybe back in our office. You know, before, when everybody used to, you know, mail things in, they were having to retain a lot of those files and keep them on site. And so, and also with the Department of Revenue, Department of Driver Services in talks, considering starting to let driver's licenses come up under the Tax Commissioner's office, as far as allowing them to renew driver's license, which is something I would like to happen for this county, is for us to be able to do something like that. That's not finalized yet, but if something like that were to take place, we would obviously need more space. And so, you know, that's something we have to look at in the future. But everything's going, you know, going great in this office. You know, like I said, we've got a great team, great staff, and they're just doing a great job for us.
I know you mentioned they've tied the computer systems together. They gave a time period as to when they expect, well, are pushing that out to the local counties?
The Department of Revenue, the Department of Driver Services have not come into a complete agreement on how they want to do things yet. We've got two separate government entities that's kind of in talks with each other. So I don't know what the timeline on that is as of yet. Like I said a second ago, I would love for that to happen in our county, you know, make it more convenient for our citizens not to have to go to Canton, Blue Ridge, and stuff like that, for us to be able to do something like that. So we're still mostly waiting on the Department of Driver Services to see about how they want to do that.
Okay. Good, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Kilgore, if you'd like.
Yes, sir. Had a pretty good month this month, almost $40,000 more than what we did in the month of March last year, which was the first month that COVID really hit us. But our total for this month, this last month, was $48,641.70, which is increasing and increasing as we go along. 25 building permits were started, and 30 certificates of occupancy were issued in the month of March. I do not have the full report for y'all yet, because that's quite a lengthy report for the process, because it has business licensing and alcohol permits and all the other kind of things that planning and development does, but the day after, we have office staff that's still working on putting together that report for y'all, so y'all have that soon, but it's looking like it's going to be a really good year for building despite the pricing materials.
Yeah. Thank you. Ms. Harvey, back in the finance world?
Right. We're busy getting ready for auditors. We've gone through the testing, the random testing, transaction testing, if they do. They will be here, the audit team will be here April 29, or 19th on Monday, for their field work. They'll be here most of that week, and should complete the audit by the first or mid-June, and hopefully presented at the June meeting, Board Commissioners meeting. So that's about how we're handling right now, is just audit work.
All right. As if that's not enough. Brian, I know you got us kicked off Saturday.
Yes, sir. We had an opening day. Blessed with no rain on Saturday morning, we thought we were for sure going to get washed out, but we, I announced around 550 kids and coaches on Saturday. We probably had upwards of 1,000 people at the park. You could tell by just the lack of parking that we were very full. Got a full day in. We honored a young man who lost his life in 2019, Blake Nossaps. We dedicated Field 4 to Blake with a sign, and we had his family go out the first pitch, so it was a nice event. We're going full speed with baseball, softball, and tee ball for the rest of April and into May. Along with all that going on, we also have COVID-19 vaccinations that's going at the rec center. Some of them are turning people through there as quickly as possible. As you can tell by the parking lots being full, and thank for the sheriff's office for managing traffic, that has helped out tremendously. Don't know how long that's going to last, but we'll keep it open as long as they need it. So it's very busy down there right now.
As you said, yesterday was 689 vaccinations they did in one day.
The interesting part is looking at the tags, that's in the, I saw one from Ohio yesterday, so that was interesting. Yeah, there's a-
And because it's a statewide site, I mean, it's not just our residents that are going, they're going all over the place.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Because I'll have-
Thank you. I did get a chance, I had a meeting at 10:00 Saturday, so I missed the opening, but when I came down right after that meeting was over around noon, the park was packed. I mean, it was, I had to circle around for a while to get out to go in, and you were actually still coaching at the time when I got over there, but it was impressive with the crowd.
Appreciate it. We have a great staff. To be able to run that many kids through in under an hour, to get that many kids announced on the field, off the field, to get ready for games, great staff. I mean, for my eight years, last Saturday was my eight-year period, and I always had a very great staff to work with, so makes it easy.
Thank you. Yeah. Ms. Paula, back in HR.
Well, there's not a lot of new things to update, but I know, I'm thankful that COVID, the COVID numbers are coming down, because even the January, February, we were very busy with that, with processing things, and the new year coming up, and we had several new hires and terminations, but for March, we've just been focusing on, you know, trying to update some proper procedures and things that we need to update, and just looking to see how it can improve. I'm just thankful COVID has slowed down, and I'd like to remind the department heads that the Board Commissioners had extended the emergency paid sick leave through the 31st of March, so that has expired, and hopefully that will be, you know, we won't be needing to use that so much anymore.
Kirk took a week off just on vacation. He really hadn't been doing anything with the roads in the last few days, but I'm surprised you're still awake, sitting still for this long.
Exactly.
What else you got going on in the road department?
Yeah, if y'all noticed, we had a storm last Thursday night. And, you know, this being my first time going through something like this, is the first time I've kind of got to see the behind-the-scenes of a lot of our EMA, and it was, it's a privilege. There's a lot that the public, the public doesn't see that these people do, you know, they put in a lot of hours. The EMA department, the 911, the sheriff's department, they all work really well together whenever something like this hits the fan. But as far as where we're at on the roads, Hobson and Evans is the only two we've still got closed. There's significant damage. I've got a quick rundown here of the ones that sustained rather significant damage. Upper Twin Mountain Lakes, again, Hobson, Upper Grandview Lake Shore, Grandview Road itself, High Jones, Hickory Cove, Wright 05, another issue on Grandview, Wendy Ridge, Upper Salem. The worst spot we've got right now is a spot on Upper Twin Mountain Lakes. We got a shoulder that kicked off into the lake, and it's something that's beyond me and my crews to do, so we've got, we're getting together pricing to get that fixed. Same thing, we're still assessing damage on a lot of the roads around. Of course, I've had crews out. That's something else I need to give a pat on the back to my crews. Everybody come in Friday, it was all hands on deck, and they've really been working and putting in the extra hours and extra effort to get our roads back open and, you know, prioritize, you know, get the roads back open, and, you know, I know the public has got a lot of, you know, stocked up coves, stocked up ditches, and I want to let them know that we are working toward that, but we've got to get our roads back open, and we've not forgot about you. We've got a list, and we are working through it, but just be patient with us, and we will get to your driveway pipe that's stocked up eventually. But that's kind of where we're at right now, and again, we're still assessing and working through our list, so that's what I'm doing. I'll go back to my hammock here in a few minutes.
And I will, when you mentioned the damage on Upper Twin Mountain Lake, the engineers actually were getting the price. He said he was going to have an email before we had the meeting today to know, but he was working on a draft to try to send something to the state for the emergency funding fund, because it is substantial, the cost and the initial price estimate, so. But he hadn't got the email to me before we got started, so they're working on preparing that so that we can try to get funding. I know that they had done something similar with the city with Jeanette Drive washed away, and had a response within 24 hours, they had a response on it. So we're hoping that once we get that number, we'll know, and I know they've been backing for, Kurt's been out there with the, he's bouncing from engineers to road crews, and I know Tanner, in particular, one of the dispatchers, had actually sent something on the night of the storm on that Thursday night. He was the, and it seems like every time we have a storm or an incident, whether it's snow or flooding, Tanner's the guy that's on call. So I would like to make a recommendation that we probably don't put him on call through the rest of the tornado season before bringing him back, because it seemed like, but they were bragging on that he was immediately responding to every single one, and trying to get the cones and barricades out to block those roads so they could get out and fix them, so definitely wanted to make sure, to recognize him for what he's doing.
And Kirk, you're doing an awesome job for a newbie.
I'll take all the credit that I can get. And I'm taking credit for a lot of people below me. I mean, we really have an awesome team over there that not, you know, it's like Sheriff Craig was saying, I can only be as good as the ones below me.
Good job.
I sent him pictures of one that I went out Friday when we were trying to do damage assessments, and I would have swore they were going to close the road, and that we were going to have to build a new bridge and everything in the world, and within a couple hours, he sent me something that it was open, that they had it all fixed, and I drove back out there, because I really didn't 100% believe that was possible, and sure enough, they had it opened up and looking better than it was before the storm had hit, so I was impressed.
It was awesome.
Ms. Christie, I know y'all have been working on the 911 phone system, you got it all wrapped up.
I haven't been phoning in last week. Thank y'all. The girls are getting adjusted to it, and guys are getting adjusted to it. It's working great so far.
Got to go.
Justin's keeping me busy with addresses.
And I know Jim is still with us as the marshal through mid-month, but Cole, Cole Connell, I guess it's a good time to introduce you. He's transferring over, and you can see he's kind of sitting on the edge with the sheriff's office people that were here, but he's transferred over from the sheriff's office to step into the role of our marshal, and so Jim's been working with him, kind of getting him trained and up and going, and giving him a few days to get going, but I, when I first introduced you as the new marshal, but at the same time, any updates? I know you're working on-
Of course, still in the transition phase. Jim's been a great, big help, you know, just a lot of paperwork and stuff right now, of course, changing some forms, and of course, picking up cases and stuff that he still had pending, and then, you know, getting new cases, but, you know, as of right now, it's just a lot of paperwork, I can say, but it's coming along.
Good. Thank you, thank you. I think that's it on the department head side for updates that are here. I know that Phillip is out this week, but they've got a big project they're getting ready to kick off, I think, the second week of April, that's the joint splosh project that they're working on on Jones Mountain to upgrade the water lines through there, and that'll be kicking up. I know in April, I'm not sure if it's still going to be the second, or if it may have been moved to the third week. They're waiting on some of the valves and meters that they'd ordered, so as soon as they're in, they're going to start that, start that process, which fortunately, we hadn't started it right before the rains that we just got, because that would have been a major injury to some digging in those trenches. And then Johnny, I know we've been, Jim has reached out to us this week, so when Johnny's back, he'll be working with them, see if they're, we don't know the status of the declaration for our area in terms of the amount of damage, whether they're going to declare anything at this point or not, but we're staying in touch with them to make sure on that side.
Johnny is good at that.
Yeah. I know the town of Talkin Rock had a significant amount. I've been in contact with them quite a bit. They had one small road-
Creekside.
Creekside, yeah, I need Creekside, but I was starting to remember Creekside, that just completely flooded, so the residents that were down through there, and the Red Cross, and a couple other organizations have been reaching out and working with them. I know one of Sloan's guys went out to do an assessment to meet with them and find out what needs they had, so trying to work with them, and they had a couple businesses, the pottery store in Talkin Rock, got completely, I think there were a couple feet of water and mud that watched it hit, so they're working through and trying to get an assessment on their park and a lot of things there. Obviously, the city of Jasper, we've all seen pictures of Jeanette Drive washed away, and the cove there, the water had gotten up, so they had some compromised waterline issues that they've been working through, and we, I know Phillip had reached out and offered our crews to help them to get back online, and I think they were able to get that all back up and going, so.
Good.
It's been kind of the dominating factor over the last couple of weeks in the office. We had two offices yesterday, when the rain hit again, that started to flood into the walls from the downspouts, so we were able to get those kind of sealed off, but we're going to have some damage to, to a couple sheets of sheet rock and some carpet, and make sure we get that repaired and up and going, so.
Good job.
So that is, as all, y'all have any other items y'all want to discuss during the work session?
I had a couple of calls, and I called Kirk, and he responds, and-
Yeah. We did, did you get the copy of the speed study on Ventry Drive? Did you email that to me?
I did.
Interesting speeds that were going through there, so.
I couldn't read it. What was the fastest? It was really high.
88.
88, that's what I-
On Ventry Drive, so we'll take that study and send it to our engineers to get them to evaluate the speed limit through there, because I know the average and median speed, so that we can kind of see, are we in range with where it's supposed to be, and then if they can then send it to the state, they may be able to kick it back to the sheriff's office for a radar permit at that point, but we'll send our study to them, so that we don't pay them to gather the data, since we gathered it, we'll get that over to them.
What was the speed limit there, 20?
20.
That's-
On the front end, it's very low. When you get to the hills, 20 makes sense, but that front from Cove Road to most of the cars, where that sign was sitting, there were only a handful of cars. there were only a handful that were going 20. When you look at the data that was on there, it was, 35 is the average that's going through there. That was the pretty consistent. I think the 85th percentile speed was at 35. But we'll let the engineers give us a report to tell us if that needs to be adjusted or if it doesn't. So, rather than...
I've always heard you can go 10-hour without getting a ticket ride home. I really use that a lot.
And how's that worked out?
I have slept in.
Before she gets herself in trouble with the law, I think we'll adjourn the work session in protection of Commissioner Denny. I know we do have an agenda for two items to move into a call meeting when we finish this, but we'll adjourn this work session at exactly 10:30. So, if anyone wants to step out at that time, you're free to. We'll move straight into the next portion of the meeting.